Good evening and welcome to the April 11th, 2024, meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. It is 7:00 PM and we're meeting at the Lakeville Police Station. Lakeyam is recording tonight. Is anyone else recording? None. I will move on to, and we do have a quorum. We'll get to the introductions of new members shortly. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for Pinecrest Village upon the application for approval of a definitive plan submitted by Maroni Building and Contracting, Inc. for a two-lot subdivision off Hickory Land and Pinecrest Drive, assessment map 043 Block 007 Lot 001. So this hearing has been rescheduled to April 25th, 2024, and that's at 6:00 PM, correct?
Correct.
6:00 PM. So I, do I have to open it and then just, do we need a motion to continue? No, it's all set. Alright. Okay, so that will be that. Item number two. Welcome new planning board members and reorganization of the board. So we have two new members. We have Dan Wulga, who is taking over the three-year unexpired term from Norah Klein. And we have David Lodge, who is the new five-year planning board member. So welcome and do either of you have anything you'd like to say?
Dan Wulga, I am a four-year resident here of Lakeville. Excited to be part of the board here. Got a vested interest of a lot of projects that are coming up and excited to work with the townspeople and everybody here. So thank you.
Yeah, I'm David Lodge, a four-year resident like Dan and spent my career as an architect. So I feel like I can add to, add to things here from my experience from sitting on the other side of the table.
Excellent. Well, thank you for joining us. Welcome. And I feel it's necessary to just, you know, recognize Mark Knox. He was here for five years and he sat in this chair position for most of that time and he dealt with a lot of difficult hearings and I learned a lot from him. So, you know, I think it's a big thanks to him is in order.
Absolutely.
Alright, so we do have to reorganize because I'm vice chair filling in as chair right now. And we need to appoint a chair.
So I'll nominate you as chair.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Unless you have anything to say.
Just, I mean, I'll look forward to, you know, getting support from you all because it's, it is a big, you know, it's a big shoes to fill. But at that, I'm all in favor.
Alright.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright, and so we will need a vice chair as well. I know John, you're the sort of second for experience here. If you would be interested, I think you'd be a good vice chair.
Okay.
You know, you'd have to fill in, so I'll motion to nominate John as vice chair.
I'll second that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah.
Alright, moving on. We have agenda item number three. A and R Plan, 162 Bedford Street, Opak Engineering, Inc. Possible vote. Do we have anyone from Opak?
And Jack Sargent is with me. So we have existing property, 162 Bedford Street here. It's just south of the intersection of 79 and Bedford Street. It's a large existing parcel. Twenty-two and so about 25, almost 26 acres total. About 170 and 50 and 200 and 300 feet frontage or more because we have two. We're creating two lots, so we have to, in order to follow the square footage and area requirements and frontage requirements for the zone, which is a business zone. So we're proposing to break it out into two lots. One with the existing house and there's a barn on there. And then bring, so that's about 3.3 acres. And then the remaining land, which would be a lot two, which is approximately 22 acres, a little over. These, we got their front yard circles. There are significant wetlands on the, on Lot Two. There are some on Lot One as well. And these have been before conservation and approved being an underad plan. And have the appropriate frontage on each one. And okay, just a bit.
Okay.
I had one question. I hadn't had the chance to kind of dig into it.
Yep.
In meeting the 175-foot frontage requirement, are you allowed to do it with non-continuous frontage?
Yeah, so I looked at the zoning and there wasn't any definition of contiguous there. And there is a 50-foot width requirement for that area of the lot to be considered for area and frontage. So there wasn't a definition for it to be contiguous.
Yeah, so that, that was my concern as well because they're getting their frontage off of this extra little strip over here.
Yeah, I mean, I understood why it was done.
Yeah.
You know, I was just wondering whether
So now
whether that's allowed or not.
Right, so I did check with Nate Darling, zoning enforcement, and he said that because our language does not specify that it must be continuous. That is why it would be allowable. So he said at some point, it had said continuous within our bylaws, but it was purposely removed at some point. I think it seems to be 2002 when that was removed. So that's something if this board would like to consider, you know, bringing back to, you know, town meeting for, to add into the definition, then we could, you know, revisit that at a later date. But for now, as it stands, he did say that it does, it does comply. And of course, you know, endorsement of an A and R does not guarantee zoning compliance.
Yep.
Just, you know, for the record.
Okay, that, you know, if there's, at some point, we get a ruling that, you know, despite the definition being pulled,
Right.
that we can go back and say, hey, wait a minute, you can't do this.
I mean, yeah, and I guess town council had been consulted on something similar to this and because it's not specified, that's where
landed, yeah.
Yeah. So any other questions or comments from the planning board?
No.
And are you here to speak to this item? No? Okay. So if anybody would like to make a motion to approve this A and R?
I'll make a motion to approve this.
For the 162?
162 Bedford Street, A and R.
Alright, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm gonna hold mine. I'm gonna abstain.
Abstain? Okay. Alright.
You have the Mylar and everything, right?
Um.
We submit to that?
Yeah, I have the Mylar. They usually sign it after the meeting and you can pick it up tomorrow.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
No, you can leave it. That'll be fine. Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, number four. We have review covenant for Stowe Estates in our packet. I did look through it. Council has given us some, some edits and some questions, I guess. So it looks like she wanted to have it confirmed if there was no mortgage to have that written in.
Mm-hmm. So these are Carmen EB1 and RS2?
Yeah, they must be, right Kathy? Those are all town council's comments?
Yes.
I'm not sure what the RS or the EB.
Must be there, the name, yeah.
I believe the applicant is here if you want to discuss.
Oh, okay. Hi, you wanna come up and say your name for the record? If you could state your name for the record?
Nathan Gagnon, owner of JJJ Properties.
Okay, and address?
6 San Travelling in Lakeville.
Thank you. Okay, so have you had a chance to review the covenant draft? Okay, and did you have answers to the questions that were?
I provided all questions. There is no mortgage on the property.
Okay.
I think that was really the only question that was addressed to me.
Fill in any other relevant permits or indicate none on the second page. Well, it's not numbered, but at the bottom of number three E, it says other documents specifying construction to be completed, namely. And if there are any other relevant permits or indicate none. So either there's, are there any other relevant permits?
Not at this time.
Okay, so then indicate none, I guess, would be the
That's how I read it.
Yeah.
Alright.
The only question I had, it was, there was a question on there that asked how many blank years I had to complete the project.
Right.
It was left blank.
I believe it seems to be two years is the standard that I've seen. Does that sound about right, Kathy?
I, you know, I didn't have a chance to look it up. I thought it was more, but that may be just be from the endorsement of the plan.
Okay.
I mean, two years for a subdivision. Like I said, I didn't have a chance to look in those. That would seem, if it was a large subdivision, that wouldn't really seem like a lot of time to be able to complete it.
The two years?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we can, I mean, we can confirm that it's two years for you?
Okay.
What time is it?
Because, well, I think council compared it to the decision. So it may not have been specified in the decision.
That's also an ask. Was it decided in the, wouldn't that be listed in the decision in our plan group?
So I think I don't recall if what the Stowe Estates covenant said. But I would assume it was two years, but I'm not, I'm not 100%. But we can, we can confirm that. And so other than that, there was no issues or questions?
No, I don't believe it states how many years we have in here.
Okay.
It's gonna be done this year. And so we're not waiting. We're
So then you'd be okay with two years?
You could put two years, yeah.
Okay, so we'll
Soon as this weather breaks, we're, we're almost done. The water's done.
It's even tough.
Yes.
I can't dig electric at the moment, but it'll be done hopefully within a month or two.
Okay.
So you have no objections to the two years?
No, sir.
Alright.
Okay.
Very good.
So
And then the last one is gets null and void because there are no mortgages.
Okay. So
So we've got confirmation in a year.
Well, I think as long as he's agreeable to the two years, we can insert the two years and that should be approved. So I guess we should probably take a vote to accept this covenant and with those minor edits. Would someone like to make a motion to accept this covenant or approve it?
Make a motion to accept the covenant with the edit says stated for Stowe Estates.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
I can pick up a coffee tomorrow, Kathy.
Well, they're gonna have to sign it, so it would have to be after they sign it.
Okay.
I'll let you know.
No problem. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I do want to say this, I know we'd asked town council for a sort of like a form covenant. I'd love to just take this and stick it into
Oh, it's a template?
The back of our rules of regs and use it as a template.
Like a checklist?
Well, because the rules of regs reference different forms.
Oh, right, right, right.
So this, this is something that we should definitely
As an example in the back there?
Yeah, so if, do we have it in a Word doc format, Kathy? We could potentially
Yeah.
Just take it in. Perfect. That'd be good. Alright, number five, land use zoning map slash buildable land area. So in our packet, we do have a printout of a map from SERPED. And it overlays the current zoning with the current uses. And Dan has it on the screen for us to look at because it's hard to see unless you really zoom in.
Geez.
Yeah.
Yeah.
This is tough.
It's touchy. But so when we look at it, I know that there is a big parcel down towards the Howland Road area, which is zoned industrial. I think that's worth taking a look at and revisiting. I think it was done in the hopes of preventing development down there. But now that we know industrial warehouses could go anywhere, it's probably a good time to change that or at least look into changing that. There is there's little pockets too of business. And I don't know if, you know, to me, it seems like something that we should almost divide the town into sections and kind of look at one section at a time. Do some drive-bys and compare to what we have on the map versus what's there. And then even verify that where we have business zone 105, is that where businesses are or is it a little bit off from that as well? Because
All in red here?
Yep, all right there. Yep, is it?
Yeah, right off of 105.
Because we know there's a lot of residential homes on Main Street as well.
Yep, by Lori Lane, Bond Street.
So I don't know if anybody is interested in maybe working on taking a section and looking at it. And I was thinking maybe, maybe this would be good for Jack. Unfortunately, he's not here with us tonight because I know he's retired, so he can, you know, spend some time maybe driving around and taking inventory for us. But I think to start, do we want to maybe look at different sections and see?
Definitely start looking at least at the larger sections of town. Road, you know, you know, commercial's the largest there because there's a lot of area to cover there.
Now, you're talking right in the center?
Uh, I'm actually looking at this one. Yeah, the red one, all commercial and everything. Just to kind of verify those outlying areas.
Mm-hmm. Right, because it's all business around Blue and Pond.
Right.
So that's, that's definitely
So you've got that and then there's a couple, I'm noticing little red streets here. I don't know if that's a mistake on the map here, but I mean, just to verify.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I think there was even a question about the line over near like the train station area as well.
Oh, yeah. Gosh, it's small.
And so a lot of that zone industrial over there is actually residential.
Residential, yeah, it's all the residential.
Okay.
So how, where do you want to start? Where should we start? Do we start in the easier areas or the denser areas? You know, to me, the easier would be like that outline areas or do we start in the
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense to start, you know, where some of the smaller areas are. Those are like a quick, quick drive-through and everything. And then, you know, can come back and verify the larger areas. Though I think I'm gonna take a little bit more time just because, I mean, there's a lot of square footage around those areas.
Because we even have like a little, one parcel, it looks like, or it's hard to tell, but it looks like one lot maybe even way down Route 18.
Lakeside Ave?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's one lot.
So
Okay.
I don't know if there's, if there's any other business
Couple of the ones over there, like
Businesses in that area or is it just that one? I'm not sure how it came to be because it does look like a spot zoning.
Oh, gotcha, yep.
So maybe it was already existing in prior.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. For the lower half of the town, southern end of town, down by Rochester, Freetown area. Get those looked at and kind of work our way up. Is there a timeline we're thinking of this?
No, I don't think it's a timeline so much as it's something that we really just need to do because it hasn't been looked at closely in a long time.
Yeah.
So
Okay.
Yeah, if we can work on it a little bit, by a little bit over the summer.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do we want to start then like going from in between the ponds? Say it, and then going down here? See if we can check off that area?
Yep, just make sure there's nothing there, nothing.
So are we looking for areas that aren't residential or areas that like?
Yeah, I think just take a ride down and see like if there is a business in these locations. Are there other businesses too? So should it not be spot zoning? Should it be, is there a cluster of them?
Right, right, enough to qualify, spreading that out so it's not just, yeah.
Right.
Like that, right, that's, those look like just like spot, like you said.
Right.
There's two of them.
So is there more? Is it all residential? Eventually, I'd like to hold a public hearing to get input as well from residents who may have some input on this, which I was thinking would, you know, maybe we could even, if, if we're able to get through it in the summer, maybe we can time it for fall.
Yeah, we should do that.
We can.
That sounds good. Yeah, so we can divide and conquer. Definitely get Jack here too. He's watching at home, I'm sure.
I'll try to reach out to him and see what, if he's interested. I know he probably can't walk, but he can make sure.
Don't drive him. At least drive, yeah.
But, yeah, drive him.
That sounds good.
Alright, so we'll start in this area. And then we'll pick another one once we've
Sure.
Did that? Okay.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Alright, so we don't need a vote or anything on that. The other item in there was the buildable land area. I did reach out to SERPED about that 5% buildable land area mapping and they're not able to help the town to do this because they're involved with grants that sort of promote 40B, so they're not able to help us come up with a map for that purpose. I did finding that out. I forwarded that onto the select board because I feel like that's something that where somebody who is able to create those maps is gonna need to do. Because you're supposed to look at each 40B project and create a little map that shows the project area. Because that's, that's the, that goes into that 5% figure.
Okay.
Alright, so that is that. Number six is the OSRD update. I did reach out to Nate. He said he'd try to send me over a response. He said he has looked at it before. And, you know, he said he, it's something he could enforce. But other than that, you know, he wasn't gonna share any like personal opinions on it. So we do have that further down for another discussion in regards to potential town meeting articles. So I will wait on that. Number seven, rules and regulations update. So the last meeting, we kind of went over some drafted edits. So the rules and regulations, just for Dan and Dave's you know, benefit, the planning board rules and regulations. It's been a while since it's been updated, so we did want to take a look at that and get those kind of up to date. Oh, Kathy, I know we talked about the process in there that's not accurate as to what you do currently. Do you want to come up with your language for that section? For the, that portion of it? I mean, and then, so the DPW director, so a big portion of it was also roads, like in roads acceptance. So I did send it off to Frank. I talked to him. He wants to get together with myself and Nate just to kind of flush out what exactly he's being asked to do. We were gonna meet this past week, but it got pushed out to next week. So I'm gonna meet with Frank and Nate and just ask, you know, let him know this is what we're, our goal is. To come up with a document that accurately represents the process and what everything entails for that. So that is the next step there. Meeting with him on Tuesday. Alright, and have you guys had a chance to look at them and just maybe read over?
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't seen them, no, not yet.
So we'll, I'll get a draft to circulate to you as well so you can review it.
Yeah.
Alright. Number eight, discuss recommendation to the select board regarding planner position or other support. Possible votes. So this one is what we've talked about
It was last, right?
Before, yeah, so we, we had a town planner. We still have the funds set aside in the budget, the town budget for that position. We've talked about potentially utilizing consultant instead or doing some other sort of configuration. I myself, I'm kind of against going in the planner direction. I think something more in line with maybe a coordinator, like a land use coordinator. It doesn't have to be a full-time position. Just a, so we could do like a land use coordinator who would work with like planning board and zoning board and conservation and all the other, the land use air boards and commission committees. And then we could use a consultant. Whenever we have a set of plans come in, we could
Have someone.
Have that sort of relation. Have that sort of um relationship, so we're not using town council funds.
Which I can imagine adds up.
Yeah, so, so I did reach out to. I think it was four different consulting. Firms, and I heard back from one and that one was just to say, well, uh, reach out to this one and it was one that I had already reached out to, so I. I actually spoke to Nate about it and he said he is gonna try to reach out as well and see if he can get a response. I was hoping to get, you know, an email response to be able to share, but I haven't gotten anything back. So. He thought it was probably good to have maybe two that we could use, so you'd have one that you'd go, your go-to and then if.
Backup in case they can't beat it?
Yep, for whatever reason, have a backup. So I don't see anything wrong with moving forward in that direction to have at least. To establish um that relationship with consultant. Um, it's just a matter of figuring out who.
Who, yeah.
So, this item to be voted on, was that just to go in front of the, to go to the select board?
So. It, it's to. Yeah, send a recommendation to them, so uh, the next meeting, our next meeting is April twenty fifth. And that same evening is the budget hearings and um. Planning is on that and I did let them know that we have a meeting that same night at six o'clock, theirs starts at five thirty. So they would be willing to let us be the first item on the agenda, so we could open our meeting at five thirty. Their meeting at um, the COA. Um, so we could open our meeting there, we'd have to have a very brief discussion. That's why it might be good to have sort of a consensus of what, what direction we wanna move in. So we can bring this to them and say, this is what we would like to see done with that. Planner position. Whether it's, you know, consultant and I don't know, I do think there is a benefit to having someone in-house, especially. You know, with the, the forty B units, keeping track of that, um.
Are you thinking of this more so as a full-time employee or part-time?
I was, I was leaning towards use a portion of it towards a part-time employee and then a portion of it towards.
Yeah, no, it's fine, I just wonder what, what, yeah, what happens if we don't end up using that other budget or portioning for the consultant? On a given year or something like that, does that, we start, we start losing that?
Cause Mark's, well, I guess Mark's salary obviously probably isn't being used and it's a pool right now, so.
Well, it is set aside, it's still, it's still, they, they still have it in the budget.
For FY twenty five, sorry. Okay, so that's good. So we'll draft up some bullet points, I guess, in terms of what we're thinking for both the consultant as well as a. Position.
Yeah.
Position, okay.
So. Do we like, so we like the idea of potentially two consultants?
Yeah. Well, obviously a minimum of one, but two would be.
Right, right, preferably.
Preferably two.
And then. Part-time.
Part-time.
Coordinator? Land use?
Yep. I'm wondering if there's any other towns that have a similar instance that we're thinking of?
So I have looked into towns that have combined roles where it's been um. Planner slash conservation. I didn't find one that exactly fit, but I do see that there are similarities. Similarities, yes, similar roles.
Okay.
I know we did. I wanna say a couple of months ago now, we did kind of circulate some different job descriptions that we looked at.
Great.
For those dual, dual roles. But I do think, because when. You know, when you, when you, at least give the consultant a try, I think, because that. That had been honestly, whenever I talked to Nate about it, he would say, you know. Consultant is really the way to go and I thought, oh, and you know, town planner sounds great. And I didn't listen to him and then I was very disappointed, so I feel like, let's, let's try the consultant. And see how it goes at least and then um. And then, I mean, maybe we need more support, maybe, maybe it's adequate, so.
No, I think for now, that's probably the best, unless we want, unless we're looking to get like another planner in, right?
Right.
So, I know we were trying to, we had asked them before to kind of give us a few months to decide what we wanna do and I think this kind of fills that. Void, if, if not temporarily, permanently, you know what I mean, but at least. I don't know if it's worth going the full-time planner at this point, I don't know, I think that was the whole idea, right? Not to go that road.
Right, because for me, it's like the communication is key. And um, and not. And not sort of like. I'm not sure how to say it.
David, not to put you on the spot, but what do you think?
No, I'm, I, I, I've looked at it and I've kind of felt like the, the consultant route is the, the way to go. At least for now. And you've talked to some, can you share their names or?
You know, I wish I had written them down, cause I, I, I don't have the information with me. I was hoping that they would respond and I would have something to send back, cause I was basically just going, you know. Online and, okay, filling out this form and then going to the next one, okay, I filled out this form and then one of them I. Sent the email directly to. But yeah, I didn't unfortunately write down the names, I'd have to like go search my history.
Yeah, I mean, if we could. Come up with some names and. You know, probably do some interviews at some point.
Or at least get like a information as to what they offer. A scope price.
Because I think you'll find, you know, different firms have different.
But I will say that they all seem to have. Like a network of different capabilities. So they had like a good sort of range of expertise from the ones that I had.
Yeah, I, they'll, they'll, they'll try to cover, they'll try to cover everything, even if they have to do it with. But uh, uh, you, you'd like, you'd like them to have it mostly in-house. And if you can, if you can determine kind of what, what their strengths are. And what their weaknesses are, then we can, you know, you don't have to use the same consultant all the time, if you got a different. But uh, you know, something a little different, then you can.
Use the other one.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Alright, well, I can go back too and I can see if I can pull up those names and forward you guys the websites. And then also um, you know, see what Nate can come up with.
Yeah.
On his own too.
So we don't have a working document, right, at this point? Just to kind of like draft up a proposal or? You, should we?
We can draft something.
Do you want me to draft something up just to start off with and then? Kinda go to it, you know?
Yeah.
Sounds good. And we want this, what, sorry, I bring up timeline again, again, um, what are we thinking before?
So we are meeting, so our next meeting, so unfortunately, we won't have time to discuss it, but if you're able to. Draft something and just send it around and nobody.
No one reply all.
And then we can meet with the select board on April twenty fifth at five thirty. And um, let them know we did discuss this, this is the route we are hoping to go in and. See what they think, April twenty fifth.
April twenty fifth. So, that meeting, so we're going over to the COA?
Yeah.
Five thirty?
Yeah.
Open that meeting?
Yeah.
Then.
Come back here.
Come back here and keep, keep it open?
Yeah.
Okay, is that why it's at six o'clock on?
So six o'clock was um, because the zoning board meeting is also that evening and I, I wanted to. Here and go to that.
Yep.
And um Kathy had to renotice for that public hearing anyways. We had said six o'clock. We will have to.
Yeah.
Kinda. Make it a point to be quick in and out and then get over here.
Okay.
Luckily, it's not too far.
Yeah. Sounds good.
Alright, so you'll draft that, Dan?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
And we don't have to vote on this, right?
Um, well, do we wanna take a vote? We can, we can take a vote if we're all in agreeant agreement and say that we've let the select board know that we voted on this and. We're gonna continue looking into the consultant. Aspect of it, but this is what we can agree on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, does anyone?
Uh, promote the idea of a consultant for town planning functions?
As well as a part-time coordinator?
Part-time just yet.
No?
Yeah. I mean, if, if, if the, you know, if, if the money's there, uh, kind of in one pot. So that we can use it for a part-time if we decide later on that we do want one. But I think right now I'd.
Go in the consultant route?
Yeah.
The only thing is, so the in-house part though, is what, what I'm concerned about is like tracking the. So part of the planner job description was to uh, report the subsidized housing inventory to the state. For the, the forty B, so that is something that I think is.
Yeah, some of that I'd, I'd e- even just be willing to do as part of our own.
I don't know if we can.
Oh.
It probably has to come from.
We, it was always done in-house before.
Yeah.
Yeah, has to come from somebody outside.
Well, in, in town hall, I believe, you know, um. Cause I think Rita used to do it. And then, um, it was part of the town planner job description. So that, that to me in itself is kind of worth making sure that it's.
I mean, I've, I've, I've had some concerns about whether some of the projects are, you know, or one particular project is fulfilling their. Their requirements.
Well, I'm sure there's other things that it could, you know, besides that, that, to, to me, that's like the main thing that comes to mind. Obviously, like inter-board committee, department, communication, um, I think that, that's a big thing. Um, cause we had actually met with Board of Health not that long ago, they had changed some of their regulations. We wouldn't have known, you know, unless you watch the meeting. So things like that too, if, if it's someone who is in-house and can say, you know, this. Maybe give like a recap, I know Kathy was doing a, a Wednesday sort of update, if we got something like that. That pertains to all land use, that'd be awesome, so that, you know, to kind of keep track of where everybody is and what. What sort of, what projects are in front of each different board and committee without having to, you know.
Watch.
Watch every single meeting too.
Yeah, okay.
So I think there are other benefits to it. And I would, I would say a full-time coordinator, but I would like to see the consultant, see how that works out, so for me, it's, that's why I'm leaning towards like part-time. Coordinator. And the consultant.
Okay, yeah, I, I can, I, from that standpoint, I can see it.
So, yeah, I know you're in the middle of making a motion.
Yeah, I, I, uh, move that we uh, uh, send a recommendation to the uh, uh, select board. That we uh, uh, go the route of hiring consultants and a, a part-time uh coordinator for. Uh, our, our planning needs.
Alright.
Second?
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Very good.
And Kathy, are, are you gonna send that? Alright, thank you.
Number nine.
Number nine, priority development. Slash priority protection areas or PDA slash PPA, discuss impossible action. So this is the other map that Kathy handed out right before our meeting, we did get an update today. From them, from Serped, um. This. Sort of priority protection and development item is thanks to the MBTA. Because they're expanding their, their funding this. To be done. Um, and so, the last version that we had, it was very similar to the previous version. And I had sent back to Serped asking to add our chapter sixty-one. Properties as priority protection. As well as, um, if you look at the, the map there. Um, up in the top right-hand corner where it's one, four, six dash sixteen. That had actually been labeled as priority protection slash development. And that is um, the farmland that is in chapter ninety-seven protection. You know, Barbara Standish had.
Yeah.
You know, flown red flags the last time that had been mentioned as. Uh, development area and so they were able to remove that and now they've changed it to priority protection. The only combined area is in the middle, I believe that's the Lakeville Country Club. That is combined priority protection and development, yes.
Yeah, one, 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 four, six, one, eight?
Yeah.
Yeah, one, four, six, one, eight. And, nine, yeah, the nineteen, the gravel pit.
Oh, that's right down at the bottom, yeah. So if you look at. Page three, you can compare, so all the, the green area that's not hashed. Is all the new protection areas, yeah. That are being added.
Cedar swamp.
Yes, yeah, that definitely, cause that has all conservation restrictions.
Oh, just seeing the chart here, okay. All the farms. Wow, I didn't realize Washburn Brook area, one seventy, that's a lot of acres.
Yeah, at one of our um, previous meetings, Nate had shared um, the, the map of. Our, our, our whole region. Um, showing the amount of priority protection all around us and Lakeville actually looked very minimum. Priority protection land, so I think this does seem to give it um. A, a bit more, um, I'd almost like to see more around. The ponds as well. But um. Are we satisfied with this? Do we, do we wanna send any more edits back to Serped? Is this something that we should say? Um, looks good and. I would assume that the select board would probably wanna review it as well. Um, for prior, it, most likely, open space.
Space, yeah.
Maybe even conservation?
They don't have, do they have wetlands in here outlined?
No, I don't think so. So we, um, so do we wanna circulate this and see if there's any feedback that we, we can get from other?
Boards?
Yeah.
Committees?
Yeah.
Except for?
We talked about select board, Concom, open space. I think that's it. Yeah, just ask for feedback.
Yeah.
But I think this all makes sense.
Okay.
The only question, cause I'm, I'm trying to do the comparison from, so this was done back in, the third, the third page is what, twenty thirteen?
Oh, so.
I'm just trying to see.
So it actually, it does show, so if you look at the little chart, so this is what it was and this is what it is.
Oh, okay.
So the green, wherever there's no hash.
Okay.
Marks.
Yeah, the hash marks are already previously protected. So anything that's not hashed and green is protected.
Gotcha.
Oh, yeah.
Now, like it's been.
Now, yeah.
Yeah.
Very good. Yeah, yeah, I think this looks good. Priority potential.
I mean, potentially, like, we'll see what conservation says, maybe they'll say we should add more wetlands, I don't know. And we could ask, you know, to do, to add certain.
Certain areas?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll get the feedback from those boards and then um, I guess mark it up here and send it back, right?
Yeah, see, see if they have anything to add, and we'll go from there and we'll put it back on for April twenty-fifth?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, I'll forward it around to the open space conservation and select board and ask for feedback. Okay. Alright. Alright, we have number ten, Serped Planning Board Appointment and At-Large Nomination Possible Vote. So the at-large um commissioners' information. So we, Lakeville falls into the Taunton area. And so they are asking for an at-large commissioner. And they're looking for somebody from, so one of the towns, Taunton, Berkeley, Carver, Dighton, Lakeville, Middleborough, and Rainham are all included in that group. So the position of at-large commissioner per the agency's bylaws is a unique opportunity for individuals to represent and understand the needs of historically disadvantaged and underrepresented minority and/or low-income populations in housing, economic development, and transportation planning processes and other important areas to speak for these needs on the Serped Commission. So that's, that's what they're looking for, so if anybody is interested, doesn't have, have to be from this board, if anybody is interested, I think, in the community. Um, but they do want somebody who is uh recommended uh by a certain organization or community group. So if anybody's interested, please reach out to Planning Department. I'm sure Kathy can help uh connect somebody with this application. And also, so Nora Klein had been the Serped representative for the planning board um, up until uh she was no longer on planning board. And then I took it over this past January. And I've been to three meetings, they meet once a month, it's the third Wednesday of the month. And it is um, is very informative, and the good thing is it's on Zoom. So, so you can sort of tune in and then I turn my camera off and just listen. Cause it's a lot of information and they go through all sorts of grant opportunities that are out there. There was a, a presentation uh by Gene Fox about the MBTA, there was a presentation from EverSource in regards to uh their new energy initiatives and um, there's, there's a lot of information and it, it kinda gives you like a window of, into see how these programs sort of trickle down, almost from like a federal level to a state level, then this is how it comes to the town level. And Serped is kind of that stepping stone to help the towns gain grant money to do this or that. And I do try to, so they'll oftentimes put a link in the chat. And I'll try to open the link, even if I don't really look at it right then and there, I'll save the link and then I'll try to send it out in an email and say, here, this is some information if you're interested in checking it out. And there was a program that I thought was um, interesting and it, it's about uh school shooter preparedness. And so that's something that um, police, fire, superintendent, and um interim TA, they all, we all got together and they're looking into um, pursuing that, so that, that's a good opportunity to take advantage of. Cause they said, it, it sounds like it's a missing piece that they could really use to sort of fit into their plan. So, so that's just one of the things that I've found fascinating and informative from Serped. But that being said, I'd love, I'd love it if somebody else is interested in, in, in taking on that role. We have the form here.
So it's just one representative?
So it's one planning board representative or commissioner, if you call it, and then there's one from the select board and that has been Lorraine Carboni. So I'll see, see her on the meetings, you know? So.
Yeah, I could, I could do it, I would be willing to take it on.
You are? Yeah, alright. Okay, so um, do we have a motion to uh point David Lodge as the Serped Commission member, planning board?
I'll make a motion to appoint David Lodge as the Serped representative for the planning board.
Alright, we have a motion.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. And please feel free to share information, cause I do, I do find it fascinating, I just, you know, I'm on the CPC as well, so I feel like.
Lot of boards.
Yeah.
So for the um, resident um, representation, uh, when is that due by?
So I think it was.
May seventeenth, is that right?
Appointments take effect May twenty-fourth, but they wanted it by May, I wanna say May tenth. Please return by May seventeenth. May seventeenth. Okay, next item on our agenda is eleven, discuss zoning articles for town meeting. So we had asked the select board to hold um, hold spots for three potential articles. One of them is to remove the mixed-use zone in its entirety. So mixed-use zone, the reason that we have those two, three-story apartments, uh, fifty-five-plus component is because of the lax language in there. Uh, there's some, and not just one of the, one of the sort of lax language in that. So that bylaw was actually tailored to a project that fell through. It was, it was written for that project, when it fell through, it was not changed, it wasn't revisited. So at this point, I think it's, in my opinion, it's safe to just do away with it. If we wanna relook at it and bring it back somewhere else.
How long ago was that?
I don't know, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
But it was, it was around the time where they were coming in with um, the Stop and Shop and the.
Oh, so.
The Target and.
Ten, somewhere around that time.
Yeah, so it, it was the project that everybody liked, so they loved, they, they got together with, and the residents had input and they came up with this bylaw to make it work for them and unfortunately fell through. So, so remove mixed-use zone is one of the items that um, we were considering sending to town meeting. Also, the open space resident, residential development, or OSRD, so um, are you familiar with that?
A little bit, but I'd like to see the.
Okay.
The actual proposed ordinance.
So.
Is this, wait, are you, is this to remove mixed use? Not, not remove open space, not remove the OSRD?
No, no, these are just the three items.
Oh, the three, I'm saying the three separate items, but it wasn't removed, one, two, three, okay?
So open space, so the open space residential development, it's, it is mentioned in our housing production plan as well as in our master plan to pass a bylaw like this. It was brought to town meeting um, pretty quick out the gate when, when the town planner came on board. And it was uh voted down at town meeting, uh, because a lot of people were, were just not on board. Like Board of Health was against it, conservation uh wasn't on board. And so we were going to try to bring it back last year. But still, it, it kind of re, resulted in not as many changes as I would have liked to see happen to it. So we ended up tabling that at town meeting. And so now we have worked on another draft that incorporates a lot of different changes and language from other towns. We've met with Board of Health on that. We did get feedback from conservation, I know Mark had, you know, talked about it on conservation.
To the Board of Health?
Yep, the Board of Health was on board, I met with open space, uh, got their comments on it. For me personally, I, I would support bringing it to town meeting to let the residents vote on it. As far as my personal support of it, I have reasons that I just, I'm still, I, I don't think I support it personally, um, even though it, so it's supposed to set aside fifty percent of, so it has to be at least twenty acres. And fifty percent of that is set aside for open space and then the, the remaining fifty percent is developed into the same number of lots that you could have developed.
Over the, over the full amount.
In the full amount, correct, and Board of Health was very adamant about each of those lots being able to perk and only the perkable lots being able to be combined, reduced down into this remaining fifty percent. So for me, I mean, I, I just know, seeing the rail coming through that Cedar Swamp area, despite the conservation restrictions, they're dumping, you know, weed.
The chemical, the.
Yeah.
Eradicate it.
Weed remover in wetlands, I think it's awful, uh, so I, I fear that, and I know even when Barbara Mankowski was still on this board, she had said that, you know, Zink was always telling her, open space is never set aside forever, so that's, that's one of my main reasons that I'm, I'm just not a hundred percent on board with it. I think it's better to let the residents own the land and have a bigger lot rather than the town or some other entity owning that land as well, and then the perk rates, I mean, it's great that they wanted all the lands, the lots to perk, but the perk rates are not what they used to be. So the allowance for perk rates has, has doubled from what it used to be, and that's why so many, so many, like, um, you know, lots here in Lakeville that couldn't perk forever, now they're perked because the standards changed. So who's to say that the standards won't continue changing and, and if so, is that still a, a protection? And um.
Well, don't you have a problem too when you've got, when you make the lots too small and, and if you don't have public water, then you're drilling wells and you've got.
So that was something that they did?
Part of the stipulation was that, yeah, that you have to either have a municipal water supply or shared water supply or a shared septic or, or a wa, a waste treatment plant. You have to read through it, there's, there's a bunch of stipulations, you have one or the other.
Yep.
In order to get it to work. The intent was to kind of minimize the amount of work a, a developer would have to do. Make it more, I guess, um, palatable for them to go after that versus trying to do like a forty B or something like that where it would be, you know, they would go after that and then, you know, to make their profits, so.
But the thing is, with open space, that will create market rate units, but there's no subsidized housing, so anytime you're building without a subsidized housing inventory, then you're putting yourself farther from that percent as well, so. So I think depending on how you all feel about this, do you, I, I'll have to send it around.
Yeah.
To you guys.
Yeah, it's on that last draft around to everybody.
So should we, should we maintain this spot with um, for the OSRD mixed use? So the, the third one, the forty R district, um, I did meet with uh Bob Nunes, Brian Day, me darling. Um, they had been an informal group sort of working with Rhino and Town Council to try to come up with a plan so that instead of um, Rhino's proposed two-hundred unit uh rental apartment over there at, at forty-three Main Street, instead of that coming in as a forty B, of, it could be a forty R if they're willing. Um, and then the forty R does make the town eligible for certain funds towards, you know, the schools and the, and the children and, and it's, it's, it's far better for the town.
No, I'd agree with that.
You know, financially, uh, cause in, with forty B you get nothing. But uh, it also removes the profit cap for developers, so that's kind of their benefit with the forty R uh, to go that route, um, but in order to create, so we have, the language for forty R district does exist, we have sub-districts, this would be creating a sub-district and it has to connect. So they already did work on uh figuring out which parcels would connect in order to bring it over to that center parcel where Rhino is proposing the two-hundred units. But we need the meets and bounds and Town Council has said that they need ninety days. So once they get the meets and, and bounds, they need ninety days in order to get that bylaw written. So because of that, um, they are thinking that it won't be until fall. So that one, we don't need a um, a placeholder for this spring because it will not likely go until fall, and I know we've kind of gotten some initial uh, notice from Rhino saying they are gonna move forward, but that's still just um, the initial phase. They're gonna send something to the state, the state will send something back to the town, the town will have thirty days to submit comments back and then um, and then it goes back to.
Yeah, so it's gonna be a longer process.
So it's a longer process, um.
Which gives us a little bit, not much, but.
So, so assuming that this would go to fall, um, cause it, it can go concurrent, too. So they can do a forty B while we're working to see if this will pass at, at town meeting.
Okay.
So, and as long as they're willing to switch to the forty R if it passes. So um, the other, the other thing is, so Mark was um, the member from planning board who was, you know, participating in these discussions informally. Are you okay if I continue that and, and informally talk to Rhino and try to figure out, you know, are they on board with this? I think the most important thing is getting those meets and bounds from them, too. So.
Yeah, I mean, if, if, if I could volunteer and kind of. Yeah, I mean, if, if, if I could volunteer and kind of meet with you. I mean, as, as easier as your backup or sidekick or however you wanna, wanna put it.
Well, so the way they, they said to me, i- if it's more than one, then it would become a subcommittee. And we didn't really wanna get into a subcommittee, cause once you form that, then you have to.
Okay, they only want one per board, oh one per like.
Yes, so it was one from the select board, one from Planning and then zoning enforcement and Town Council. But I do promise to bring everything, everything back and share everything that I get, you know, with, with the rest of you. So that everybody's on the same page.
I'm okay with that.
That okay, David? All right, so. I can let. The interim TA know that we are still holding those two spots for the. Mixed use and open space for spring, yes, and then um. I guess we'll put it on another, a future agenda, once I, once you guys have a chance to look through that as well. So maybe even try to get that on four twenty five. Okay, so. Do we wanna take a vote for that, for those two items?
I mean, if you want, right now you just have a placeholder, you haven't submitted an article, so you are gonna have to make that vote.
Okay. So. So then. Does someone wanna make a motion to then, to um. Send both mixed use and open space residential development. To select board as a warrant article, so do you feel comfortable without looking at the OSRD to send that on or?
Can we wait till next meeting?
True, yeah.
I would probably table that.
Yeah, if you would send that.
So we'll wait till the next meeting. June tenth, right? They did push it out from.
Okay, so we still have time, right?
The warrant closed on April eighth, so it is closed, but they have these placeholders. But if it gets too far into it.
It has to be reviewed also, so I mean, it should be getting in like soon.
I mean, we could push it off till fall, if you feel better with fall, because we are, we're getting down to the wire with. With getting it on and then being able to take it off if you, if, if that's not the direction, but I don't know.
Maybe we, maybe we push off the open space, the OSRD and the, the forty R until fall and we, we push the removed mixed use.
Yeah, cause that one I feel confident with.
That gives us all time to look at it, we have, we have two sets of fresh eyes on that.
And we still haven't, yeah, like Kathy said, we haven't had Town Council review it.
Alright, so I'll, I'll make a motion to add, to keep uh remove mixed use zone to um. Spring town meeting and push oh, the OSRD and forty R to fall town meeting. To remove that, remove those placeholders from the warrant. Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor? Kathy, are you, you gonna send that or do you want me to?
I'll take care of it.
Number twelve, review the following zoning board of appeals petitions. So the first one is Mason at two seventeen County. Now, a lot of times we don't make. A recommendation to zoning board, um especially when it's residential. But now these two items here are, are, so this one's business. Um it's that little business zone down a county street. Um the only, yeah, the only thing is. I wanted to drive by and see how far the water is, cause they're, they're looking to keep it in that same. Closeness to the water. So, I mean, e- either we could make a recommendation to ZBA or we could just make no recommendation.
So they're, they're just, they're adding the deck to extend up.
So, so if you look at it though, it's, they're actually gonna raise the existing house there as well.
Oh, this, this structure right here?
Yeah, and, and put a new one, so.
Demolition and construction of a two bedroom dwelling and construction of an exterior deck attached to the primary building's second floor.
And, and so then when you see down here, it's uh currently the existing dwelling is twenty eight and a half feet. By twenty eight and a half feet and sits three and a half feet from the existing side property line, so they're gonna move it back four feet from the property line. But then it says, look at the new structure, propose the distance from the rear property line, Long Pond to remain the same. So I, I just know that that water comes up. Very high, especially. Year like this year, um I'm assuming they're gonna do their due diligence on ZBA, they are much. More familiar with these projects. Uh does anyone wanna make a recommendation or should we just send no comment?
Make a, you know, make a motion not to recommend, to make no recommendation?
Yeah, if that's what you. I meant to drive by to see what it's like bringing up, but I didn't. Yeah, it definitely comes up. I would think they're gonna consider it, but it couldn't hurt to send a comment. That, you know, Planning Board is concerned about.
And how far is, so you mentioned the current structures will be raised. Rebuilt, how far back?
It doesn't say the distance from Long Pond, it just says that the same. The distance from the rear property line to remain the same.
They are changing some of the setbacks, right? So the rear setback was thirteen, the proposed would be ten point eight. That's, I think, I believe that's the deck, right?
Oh yeah, that's the deck.
So that must be the ten point eight, so that must be from, that's the setback, right? So that must be the water, right?
Intention from the rear, yeah, yeah.
So you see the deck there? Whatever it is, that's a three feet.
Gosh, this is small.
Yeah, that property is, right?
Yes.
That's there, so there, it's right, that's where it is on top of the water, I still don't know like.
And I know that the house, when you're looking at just to the left, I know the water comes right up. I've seen it just about to the road.
Yeah, especially now.
Oh, it must be, yeah. So does someone wanna make a motion to send a comment to the ZBA? Concern, with concerns about setback from the water and flooding?
Couldn't know that, I mean, I noticed that buildings in the same location, more or less.
Right. But it also looks, I, I don't think anybody's been living there.
Bacon for a reason, so the FEMA flood elevation is fifty seven, this house would be sitting at fifty five, fifty six? Fifty seven, fifty six? Yeah, I don't know what the, are they raising it?
That, yeah, that doesn't seem to say if it's.
They say it was single level?
I don't believe it is.
Right, they had two bedroom, right? So it's gonna be a two bedroom. No basement. I guess we could just, again, a con- a comment about.
Just a concern about.
Concern about, yeah, the house in proximity to the.
Just the elevation of the, the water.
Doesn't give you.
So would, would someone like to make that motion?
Alright, okay, I'll, I'll make a motion to send a comment to the zoning board of appeals. Planning Board's concerned with the uh proposed dwelling unit in proximity to the uh Long Pond shoreline.
I second that.
Motion and a second?
Aye.
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 Okay, and then the second one is Bud's Goods at four seventy five Kenneth Welch Drive. So reading through this, um my, the only thing that came to mind for me is parking. Because they're, they're adding some square footage and there's been parking issues. Not at this specific building, but just in that area.
I, I was, I drove down there the other day and I was like, oh, they're still there.
So, so they.
They park off the road.
They put, they put up a fence on the town property, now they're parking on their, I think it's mostly their own property.
But it's still.
In an industrial park.
Perpendicular to the roads, they're all backing it up. I, I, I just happened to be down there Tuesday.
And I did see that they're finally moving forward with conservation, but who knows how, because that, that, they were supposed to. Put additional parking over there and it just stalled. But, so that, so we're talking across the street from this.
Oh, across the street, okay.
So, not to be confused with the existing parking issue, my concern is just if they're adding. Some square footage, that if that's gonna affect the parking at their facility as well. So, my personal.
How much are they adding?
Six thousand seven hundred and forty seven.
Right, so then they have to go, they have to come through planning anyways, right, don't they?
So if it's ten thousand or more or a change in ten percent of occupancy load. So, the only thing is so.
They're adding like, they're adding like manufacturing space, so it's like, no, there's no load to it really.
So, uh but if they're bringing in more workers to work in there.
Right, but, I mean, if they, six thousand square feet, they may bring in like. One person or two people really, we, we, yeah, depends on.
Right, it depends on how.
And then how they're using it.
Right.
Right, so I think for me, I would just like to send a comment to zoning board, just to make sure that parking is adequate. For any expansion.
Alright, so there, properties, twenty thousand square foot industrial buildings, and they're adding sixty seven, forty seven, so they're. Adding, oh, yeah, what, they're adding a third. Projected exterior, since it's a twenty three parking space at the time, the original firm, Bud's Goods, didn't this come before us? This paid twenty five employees.
Uh Bud's Good, yeah, a while ago.
Right, they were changing the name or something like that? That, was that this one or was that something different? Right, was the one that was, they were changing their name? They changed, yeah, yeah, okay. So yeah, and I, I'll, I'll make a motion to send a comment to the zoning board of appeals that Planning Board just. Wants to note the uh parking has to be evaluated, right, as part of this project.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
How do we approve the minutes? Two of the four have to. Sorry, I didn't mean to jump in front of your chair. I was thinking of that the whole time, like how do we.
So I believe we just need a quorum. The present members, which we want to have, cause Jack's not here, should we just push these off?
Uh, I mean, you can do that, I've read that all, technically the chair cannot, and can approve minutes.
Really?
But if you, I think I got that maybe from the AG, if you wanna wait till next meeting. To ensure that.
Well, we can approve one of them, cause Jack wasn't there.
Oh, right, okay.
For the one with the.
February seventh.
Yeah, the one at the um Board of Health, right?
Yes. Alright, so wanna make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the uh February seventh, twenty twenty four, um Planning Board meeting minutes.
Alright, motion and.
Second.
I'll second.
Oh, go for it.
And um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
They might, I don't know if they can, they should abstain, right? Okay, so we'll approve the February seventh and then should we hold off on the February twelfth until Jack is with us? The only question I had.
That's the, that's the.
On page three, on the, the first full paragraph where it says Ms. McEckeren said. With forty B rentals all count, it changes with forty R, I didn't say that, I know I asked a question. But I think Attorney Questle said that, but then Nate kind of reiterated that if it's rental and it's twenty five percent. It will still count, so. I would say to just remove that line from it, instead of. Instead of trying to make that edit. But um. You didn't write these Kathy, right?
I didn't, but I, I, I almost feel like there was something in that and I feel like I tried to correct it. Cause it didn't sound right, so. I don't, I don't, I don't believe I went back to it, so I can, I can check the video.
Did you, did you ask?
I asked Town Council, does it change, and at first she said, yes, it changes, but then Nate. Sort of reiterated that because it's a rental and it's twenty five percent of it, then it would, it would still all count towards the. Subsidized housing inventory.
So should we push this till next time?
So yeah, if you, if you wanna look into it Kathy and maybe get a different line or edit for that one. And we'll put it on for twenty fifth.
Right, we don't have to make a motion for that, right? Just, we just can hold on, yeah, if it's possible.
Alright, so our next meeting is April twenty fifth, it says six PM, but really it's gonna be at five thirty at the COA. To start with the select board and Kathy, you'll be able to, to add that to the.
It has to be posted as a separate meeting.
Oh, cause of the location, yeah, alright, okay.
So we'll have two meetings on that, right?
Oh, so we can't just continue?
We have to close it and then open another one?
Do we?
Well, it's two separate meetings, so. We would open that one and then close that and then come to this one and open that.
Alright, we'll have to be quick about that. Dan, good thing Dan's drafting something, alright, so any other business? Any correspondence Kathy?
Any public comment?
Alright, well. Motion to adjourn?
Go ahead. A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.